Well, you should be.
You ready?
Yep, I'm ready.
Okay, I make a motion to open the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Lucas.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Does any board member have any conflicts of interest or anything to disclose regarding the agenda items before us?
I do not.
I do not?
I do not.
I do not. With that being said, we would ask the clerk to please read or inform us of the open meeting compliance certification.
I'm going to just summarize real quick and save us some time tonight, but the public will have opportunities to comment on specific agenda items when they occur in the meeting and also general matters at the end of the meeting. Speakers can comment once in each comment window if it is not on a specific... If it is on a specific agenda item, it is not a debate, a deposition, or a panel discussion. Speakers must step to the front of the room if physically able. Ultimately, they may provide comments from where they are seated. If attendee is participating via web conference technology such as Zoom, the clerk will announce how attendees should signal that they wish to comment. This is made different by platform, but is typically accomplished through the raise your hand feature, which we are using Zoom, so I do request that you raise your hand. If you have a question you would like me to ask the board, put it in the Q and A. I do not check the chat. Please remember to give me your name and address. As much as I know so many wonderful people in the village, I don't remember where you live all the time, so thank you. Speakers must give their name, address, and organization. There shall be exemption for any category of people protected by New York State law. Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer. Speakers must limit their remarks to three minutes on any given topic. Speakers may not yield any remaining time they may have to another speaker. Board members, with the permission of the mayor, only interrupt a speaker during their remarks for the purpose of clarification or information. Speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties or their representatives may address the board by written communications to villageclerk@villageofpittsburgh.com. All written communications will become part of the public record and will be attached to the minutes for that meeting. At the center's request, written communications will be read aloud by the clerk at the meeting and will adhere to the three-minute time limit. Written materials or other media are provided by attendees during the meeting. They must be submitted to the village board with optional distribution to audience members. All materials will be part of the public record. Private distribution of materials to audience members only is prohibited. I'm glad I shortened that.
Okay.
Question about a three-minute time limit?
I'm gonna put myself on it.
She's passed a three-minute time limit.
Do you repeat that word?
I mean that word.
It's gonna be a quiz, I know. Would everybody please silence their cell phones, just as a reminder if you haven't already? Okay, first thing up, the building inspector report. Any questions that... It's in the packet for everybody? Did you want to add anything to your report or anything to...
Silence is golden.
Okay. You've been busy, I know. Oh, no, I just... I did have a quick question, just only on the Army Energy classes. What were they about? Because I know you've been taking so much of that training, which is really helpful.
Yeah, one was our residential energy class, kind of on the commercial.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm trying to keep up on, you know, any of the newer classes in regards to the new changes for the energy code.
Well, perhaps because we're a climate-smart community too, so...
One thing on your report, met with Roger Powers and did a walk-through of Barnes and cited a few concerns regarding securing the premises and weather infiltration. And anything...
Already done.
But, right, anything to worry about?
No, I... As I went through them, no, I really don't... They're in really good shape and insecure. They were two... Part of the roof on the... Would be the west side was open, and then the mayor pointed out two windows that were open on the east side. They've all been... The roof has been patched in and the windows have been secured.
Okay, thanks.
Really cool old barns.
Yeah.
I mean, really cool, the whole beam setup, and it would make some great spaces for the village. It really would.
They're iconic, as we know. Any other questions or comments? Okay, then moving on, the DPW report? Hi, Zach.
I probably should reference something in my portion. I did... Ryan, who Charles Corby, Jr., he came in today and I talked to him. He sent me an email requesting an extension of time until April 15th in order to take care of that tenant house. My feeling is, you know, I would prefer the court at this point to, you know, to do what they need to do to get him to do something because, I mean, he had January, the weather's been nice, nothing's done, there's more windows broken, but it's really up to the board as to where this proceeds.
Any comments from the board? Want to weigh in on that, folks?
I hate to rely on my memory of this, but it seems to me in past years, when extensions have been requested by other entities, we have... We have granted them. That doesn't seem excessive, you know, excessive, but once the April date comes, that's it. No more after that. That's my view.
Okay, okay. Any other thoughts, Justin? Anything to add to what Lila was saying or...
Not much. I wish we had some time to consider this before the meeting. I'd like to see... It would have been great if we had like a written letter or something requesting an extension, but without that, I do tend to agree that the villages tended to be lenient when one time was requested on different matters. I feel like in general, if someone is agreeing to do something that the village wants, it's good to make some concessions so that it's on a timeline they feel is reasonable.
Try to work it out.
Right.
Okay.
Dan, did you want to add anything to that?
Nothing. Have they been... How's that been going with extensions? I know, Jeff, you've been involved with this and also with Steve.
I mean, we ended the work... We went to the court day to date and it just got missed and frankly, that was a negotiated date approved by the board.
Yes, I remember that. So we have this back before us with the information.
Steve, when was the ticket first issued? When was the ticket first issued?
The ticket was issued last September, I think, the first ticket. And it's been... It's been almost two years from the initial violation because of COVID. You know, it'd be a lot of people, a lot of leeway, I did anyways, you know, just because COVID, many people couldn't get things done. I have, you know, I have no problem either way, but once that April date hits, I would expect it is a hard... A hard line.
So then in September, the... But I just followed... I wanted to understand the timeline. So September, then the ticket was issued, then they went to court, then it was a... You said that there was... I remember that, there was a negotiated date that they said they would comply by that date.
Well, we went to court twice.
Oh, to court twice, okay. And then...
The second court date when they made a deal and they gave until January and adjourned it as long as things were done.
Oh, I see, okay. So now here we are, so they missed the January, and now they're asking again for yet another extent. Okay, just so... I just think it's important that we understand the timeline for all of this. Yeah.
If I might just ask one other question. So if we don't agree to this extension, then essentially we're just going back to the courts, right? And also incurring more legal expenses on...
Yeah, there's that too, for sure.
And I think that for all these reasons, it's in our best interest to let us play out for a couple of months. But that's my opinion.
Like I said, I'm the way to life. It's up to the board, you guys are the... My next question.
Given how long things are taking in court, doesn't mean that it's gonna happen any more quickly if we were to bounce it...
So give it half the balance to April. Okay. Try, give it a try.
Maybe there's something that could help all parties here. Could we get something written by the party making this request?
Yeah, I got an email.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, you have a matter of record.
I'll make sure that it's all the board members' mail.
Okay.
Should we have a motion at the meeting?
A motion?
I'll make a motion that we do not seek further enforcement until the April 15th deadline, which has been requested by the property owner.
I have a... I'll second it. Just a clarifying question. So they've gone in to see the judge once? Three times?
At least, right?
But...
Who's spokesman?
Is it on someone's desk?
Oh, okay.
Okay, so they've been in three times, and one of them was recently? One of them was between...
December and November, right?
Yeah, I know, November, beginning of December, yeah.
They're gonna get the roof done for sure in December.
Yeah, because there was an old show, a show, and then a second show.
They're gonna roof down December, which is the most part of this... More part of this whole deal. And then they're gonna get everything else done by the first or the 31st. They're on the file, wouldn't they?
So did they get a notice from the court from our recent decision to now?
No.
Okay, so they just happened to come in?
As far as the court concerned, we know we're bad.
Steve went down and said...
Yeah, three times.
No, after that.
Okay.
Steve went down and said, "Come on." Right?
Could I see the email? I'm mostly just interested if they're agreeing to do everything as it's been determined by the court.
Well, it's actually determined by us. Agreed to by... This is a consent.
So I want to make sure that this is consistent with those agreements. Thank you.
Got any last questions?
Yeah, I'm good.
Dan, can you mail this in? So they've... So the other times that they've been in court, they have agreed each time to comply. And then you're back in court, and now here we... You know, then it was December, then it was Jan... You know, so we're just seeing this ongoing on a month-to-month basis. So now the motion's been made that's before us to, again, give them the additional time to April, what was the... The 15th?
I have one more question. Is there any... Is there any risk? Is there any additional risk if it goes between now and April?
It's hard to assess. It depends on the weather. You know, I mean, how rough will we get between now and then?
Because there's open holes in the... Windows are broken, there's holes in the roof. Weather can do further compromising of the interior of the structure.
All right, well, I'd be in favor of extending it, but asking them to do it sooner rather than later for those reasons.
Jeff, are you okay with that not...
I agree that as being fully secure the house would mean everything we asked you to do by April 15th. So I think that's a complete... An agreement to complete everything by April 15th.
I would agree with that, and by doing this, we're not missing any court deadlines if we do decide to pursue enforcement.
Yeah, we're not.
Okay, so any further discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else on... Read, okay. Next up then, please, the treasurer's report.
Uh...
No.
Back.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's why I recognized you and then we'll go back to Steve. The DPW report. Anything?
I do for Zach. I'm just looking to get my hard copy in front of me.
No, he has a hard copy.
I sent it to the...
Oh.
Sorry.
Oh, I didn't...
Our classes go.
There was no hard copy in her room.
I didn't get it, no. He sent it separately.
I have to soak it in front of my computer.
I wonder if I send it to you and print it out?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't have it.
That's okay.
I just sent it to you.
Yeah, you always need to send it to the...
Give me a minute, I'll go print it.
I did read it, you know, online, so I could do it from memory, a question that I have.
It wasn't anything unusual.
No, it's all the usual stuff. It's a little cryptic, I suppose, because I didn't have a whole lot of time on trying to put a lot of information into what I was doing with the training and stuff, so it's why I was late.
I'm sure there's steel tape.
You know, the usual stuff. Do you have a question?
Yeah, ask my question. Regarding the 75 Monroe Site Plan Review Sewer Compestation Connections, drainage responsibilities, property maintenance responsibilities, and the median on Monroe Avenue responsibilities. When you say responsibilities, are you referring to village responsibilities in the future?
Uh, yes, but I'm not sure what those are yet. Those are just stuff that we were discussing.
Okay, so what you are explaining, attempting to explain to the board, perhaps going forward, is the additional workload that you will be experiencing, additional comp station you will be monitoring?
Possibly. None of that's defined at this point. Like I said, it was just a discussion.
Okay.
The possibilities.
Okay. The reason I ask the questions is that I would like to sort of have a picture of what we might expect as a village regarding fiscal responsibility going forward.
Sure.
Okay, and so that is what you were attempting to explain to us. You're doing the groundwork now so that you could come back to the board and say, "This is what I anticipate will be occurring."
Yeah, I'm not sure if it'll be me presenting that because I believe Scott is going to leave on this, but it was just my inclusion in that discussion.
Because what we might be looking at is increased manpower. I mean, we... I'm trying to get a picture of...
We don't know that yet. I think it's preliminary, and I think he was just letting the board know that there's been... There's just been a preliminary meeting. These things were talked about.
Yeah, they're so far out at this moment, they even try to define, you know, what's needed or not needed, honestly. Or just more or less, whether you guys know that discussion was happening.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Zach or anything else you want to add, Zach?
No.
You're good? Yeah, I know you've been doing your training.
Right, no, I mean, it's busy work, a lot of the time, you know, the season. It's just the usual stuff of trying to maintain what we can. The bowlers, benches, as you guys all know, the usual stuff.
You haven't had to plow too much.
Yeah.
That's been a lot.
A lot of streets meeting. It's strange.
Okay.
And I did mention the sign to the mayor earlier, and I sent you a photograph.
Yeah, we're circling back with nice dot on that.
On Jeff Road.
No, this is a sign that's gonna be covering the east facing clock.
Yeah, it's higher than... Yeah, so we're circling back with nice dot.
Did you see the smashed sign on East River? It's on Jefferson and East Fut terrace, one of the big tall...
Crosswalk signs?
Here, yeah, it got plowed over like two days ago.
That's the second time it's happened.
Okay. Yikes, all right. Next up, treasurer.
Could I just raise a point on the DPW report?
Name and address, please.
Robert Corby, Southern Washington Avenue. In front of the library, there's three donated benches. The one in the center, which is in memory of Thomas Corcoran, village resident, really needs to be refinished. The other two, it looks like they've been refinished early recently, but it's completely gray and it really needs some attention.
Thank you.
It just went out like a year and a half or two. That was the one I'm sitting on there.
Okay, we'll take a look at it. Thanks for bringing that up. Okay, treasurer's report?
Okay, we'll start with the bill pay. Is there any questions related to the Senate report? Things too crazy, so if I can approve for that?
Well, I can't a motion. To approve is presented? Oh, hang on, Dan's taking a look here.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second roll call.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, motion, yeah, I said entertain a motion. Okay, there we go, motion is... Okay.
That's the format.
There we go.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you on that.
There was one thing that jumped out of the screen, Sean Darcy jeans.
Yes, we reimburse the DPW for purchasing their jeans. Open jeans. So, yes, it's jeans. Okay, the diversity training update. We are signed up. I just received all the information to start the training on the online today. So we'll be actually meeting with the employees next week, and we'll start bringing them in, round robin, and have them sit down and do at least the computer training. I've got no further in-person.
Great. The in-person, we've got a reminder to call our person February 20th.
Okay.
And that'll... That's in my calendar, I saw it. Which of the online services?
The Paradise.
Paradise?
Yeah.
That's the one out of California.
Pittsburgh.
Oh, it's Pittsburgh, okay. All right.
So we're good to go.
Did you go through it once?
I've been through it once, yes. And I'm gonna go through it again. I'll do it first before everybody makes sure it doesn't glitch and everything's working fine.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Next item for me is update on newsletter. Mayor Palmer and Megan are working on that. We did follow the previous format we used. We're looking at it and we're circulating, getting the articles together, and we'll be getting a draft out shortly.
Probably next week, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, what else?
In your packet, you have the flower bid for the baskets for the upcoming year, so if we can have that approved, so we can get those ordered, because they have to start growing the flowers.
Yeah, the only other thing... The thing that comes out of that, we were talking about this today, if you look at her handwriting, there... We have two large pots and three small to be planted out, and that's something that we can do with scouts, you know? So I think that'd be kind of nice, because they're all excited about the next...
So you're gonna back those out as well?
Yeah, let's back those out, and that... So it comes to without... She says total without the pots. Do you see that there on your... Yeah. So, and it's higher this year, you know, also because we have more baskets this year. We didn't put out as many because of the construction with the bridge closure and things like that, so...
With the PGA, you want to dress it up more.
Yep.
So do we have a new bottom line then, once you back out the small pots?
Yeah, it's in your data, so...
Yeah, she sticks...
Yeah, so it's the total without the pots.
Got it.
Yep.
And we only received one bid, I assume?
Yes, we did reach out to everybody.
I know. It's just it's tough to get the bids. So any other questions or entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid from Bud and Shoe Greenhouses and then amount of $6,465 for the spring flower planting for the Village of Pittsburgh.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Lucas.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes. I have two other quick items. I'm sorry they're not on my list, but maybe anyway. One of our new employees, this board agreed for funding with the healthcare is Brandon Hopkins. I need approval to fund one month of the HSA for $250. If I can have that, so we can get that done.
Oh, that would just jump out of there.
And you guys are clear?
Okay, roll call.
Let me write down the motion. Trustee Lucas.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes. And back to the code review meeting, we're trying desperately to schedule the dates for 2/23 or 2/28. 27th was a false date. I didn't realize HPV, so we don't want to push them out of the room. Do either of those dates work so we can get this finalized? I think the 23rd was okay. It would be prior to the meeting and a 5:00 start. If that works for the board, it might be easier. The dates... The calendar, to be honest, I'm sorry, is a mess trying to schedule these things.
I can't do an earlier event on the 23rd. 6:30 is gonna be hard for me to make, so... But by all means, have it without me, it's fine. I don't mind.
I'm fine anyway.
What day of the week is the 28th? Because I said I liked it.
It's the Tuesday. It's Tuesday, 28th.
Okay.
So...
Tuesday at like 5:30, 6 o'clock, whatever works for the board.
I can't do Tuesday, the 21st either.
No, it's not the 21st, 28th.
Everybody look at your calendars.
I can, it's not great.
It's not great.
Wednesdays are good, Mondays are good.
So Thursday is our regular meeting?
Thursday would be our regular meeting. It would be earlier prior to the meeting, or we go the Tuesday, the 28th at its own time.
Either one works for me.
I'm fine either one. I mean, I'm all in anyway, so it's whatever works for everybody else. And Dan can't make it on the 28th. Or no, you can make it on the 28th, I'm sorry.
I can make it on the 28th. So, yeah, I'll say 28th is better, but we should also check with the...
So we tentative on the 28th, and I'll check with trustee Stetser tomorrow?
That works?
Could we do six?
Justin, does that work for you? Okay.
Could we do six rather than...
Yeah, sure. Whatever.
That's better.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate your participation. And that's all I have, this evening.
You're gonna send a confirmation out and check with trustee Stetser?
Yes, I will. I will confirm that with the board. And reminder, we do have budget meeting on Monday. Also, if the mayor doesn't mind, I won't steal your thunder, but our sewer bills did go out. You can pay online, so feel free to click. There is a surcharge for using your card, but...
Is the board in trouble?
No, it's working. It is working. If you have any problems, call the office, but it is working.
Yeah, we've been receiving payments.
We've been getting payments there.
The trustee lobby's been paying, so they're...
We've done it. We'll make a handout.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
Nope, that's it. That's all I got.
Okay, and I think let's move minutes to the end, you know, just to... And I think we should probably do that as a matter of course, you know, unless, you know, there's really nothing on the agenda.
My feelings are so hurt.
I know, I'm just like, all right, okay. First agenda item up is the consideration of the application for a short-term retail permit for Harla Day Hots.
Mr. Clutton contacted us, and he's allowing Steve to represent the matter. We have an email.
Oh, God. Oh.
Chief.
Okay.
Charlie, Charlie Harley, you know, Harley Hots has been a mainstay in the village for many, many years. He's going to perform the same exact function he has every year, just don't change the location, hours, operation days.
Okay, will the potential... I don't want to call construction, but changes to that area affect...
They say they will accommodate him somehow. There is talk if he was bumped that they would try and find a different location, which I don't know how easy it would be, but there's a lot to be worked out before they can do anything over anyways. So when I started to call Shankly the other day, he doesn't even know if that will happen this year.
May I assume that if that occurs, that it would have to come back to the court because of the changes?
Yes, they need a location to one of our village properties. Yes, he would have to go back and readjust the format.
Okay. And Dorothy, can you remind us of the date for the public input on their proposed...
21st, February 21st.
February 21st, yeah.
Because the date we're working on finalizing to get out, we should be seeing that up on our website, Facebook, and everything, not by the community.
Yeah, we need to go to public hearing, that's the point.
Yeah, no, that's something.
We're talking about just if the construction is gonna take place there, we're gonna have public input from our villagers. Yeah.
I would recommend March 9th for the public hearing at 7:00.
March 9th at 7:00, okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we move to public hearing on March 7th.
9th.
9th. March 9th. March 9th, the application for short-term retail for Mr. Clutton. Anyone for nation needed?
I said that.
At 7:00 PM?
Justin, did you just second that?
I just said at 7:00 PM to...
Oh, okay, I wasn't sure, I thought I heard something. Dan? Okay, got it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Keating. Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
It's March 8th, 7th. Let's see what else could be here. The committee letter. We'll just get to that for a minute here.
We have that recommendation at the table that came in today. Earlier today, I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to get through the board.
Okay. Yeah, Attorney Spitzer's out of town, so he sort of came in over the transom, but it's a short letter.
From Attorney Spitzer?
Yeah, he did a draft of this for us based on the recommendations and the discussion that, you know, the emails that went out to the board.
I'll make a motion to approve Attorney Spitzer's draft.
There's a motion, is there a second? I'll second. Discussion?
Would the public have a copy of that?
It just came in, so if you want to give them a copy?
Thank you.
Is that for discussion with the board? Yes, I was still waiting for information before we were willing to move forward on any comita requests. I understand that it doesn't hinge on our approval, I understand that, but I, I felt that I would feel more comfortable with more financial information regarding exactly what was being requested, what was, what, what it meant for the taxpayers on village before I would make a decision.
Right.
Dan?
I guess I don't get that, because we all signed a letter that we sent to them that said we would do this.
Well, there was, but it was in the, in the form of a negotiation, which then did not, we dropped that, so that it was now being considered on its own. That is the way I'm looking at it.
Okay, what, what was not fulfilled during the negoti, uh, on that list of items that we sent over to them? What was not fulfilled, Lily?
I don't think, I don't think.
I had a question for you, Lily.
No, he's asking me a question, yes.
And I, and I responded, I responded, I just didn't feel that, that because it was necessarily laid out as a, a, a as something that we were tying ourselves to was a maybe, I don't see it as a obligation. I'm considering it on its own now, I'm sorry, you don't understand.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
I don't, I'm sorry that I can't explain it to you.
Okay, that's much different than, I'm sorry you don't understand, I understand perfectly, Lily.
Okay, okay, okay.
Um, so I did want to comment the.
And then, and then Justin, okay.
Yeah. If the barns, I, this is a, this is a matter of being, to me, of being business friendly. Like, I could go on and on and on about why we should do this, but at its heart, this is ma, I'm not, I'm just looking. At its heart, this is about being business friendly. If somebody were to, there's only a few spots left in the village that are developable. One of them is the pickle factory, if the pickle factory came, somebody came to us and said, hey, we got this idea for what we want to do to the pickle factory, and we all thought, yeah, this is something we'd like to do, offering a supportive letter to Comida would be something that we would do for them. If somebody came to us and said, hey, the barns are something we want to develop, and we all thought that was a good idea, we would probably put forward a, a letter supporting tax relief for people who want to invest in our community. That we have promised this on multiple occasions and are still debating it is, is something I don't understand, Lily. Uh, because we've been over and over, like, we've said we would do this on multiple occasions by multiple boards, and all we've ever been told by our attorneys is, don't change what you've offered in terms of 75 Monroe. Just stick to what has been promised and those kinds of things. So, we would make this offer to anybody, we've made it before, three different boards made it. The trustees in, this was 2021, end of '21?
No.
End of '20, end of '20. The trustees signed a letter saying we'd do it, the PCBA signed a letter say, saying we'd do it, and the HPB signed a letter saying we'd do it. Why this board is delaying on that for reasons that aren't clear to me uh, just doesn't make any sense. And I think it sends a terrible message to the business community that Pittsburgh Village as a government entity will not do the things that are needed to support thriving business in our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan, yes, Justin?
Sure, I, I appreciate all the thoughts on this, I would take a slightly different track than trustee Keating. Um, and I would start, there, there are a few points that I would like to make about this. The first one being that my understanding here is that we're looking at a very substantial cost in terms of lost tax revenue. Based on the program that is being sought, uh, the, the Comida, Comida program, the particular aspect of that, we're looking at losing approximately 50, 50%, five zero of tax revenue over 10 years. So we could say going without taxes for five years on the entire 75 Monroe parcel, or the, the portion excluding the restaurant, uh, the commercial aspects. But this is a, a big loss in, in revenue, as I'm understanding it right now.
How big a loss is that?
Well, that's, I, I imagine that the taxes would be somewhat substantial, I don't know what that is yet, it would be based on the assessment of the property. Um, and I think that, you know, since there's a considerable development being made here, no one's gonna know what the assessment will be, um, but I have to imagine that it's going to be considerable, commensurate with what's being built. And, and this is not just village taxes, but this is also going to be everything based on that assessment, so town and school as well. Um, and, and that could be possibly detrimental to those other entities. Um, the, the point that this has been made as a promise, to me, is, is not correct. That was one of the possible provisions in proposed settlement agreement. Um, we are not in the context of a court settlement right now, there was a, a decision by the court, um, and so we are not currently in settlement discussions. So to me, we are not bound by one of the provisions of the possible proposed settlement that was extended at that point in time. The third and, and final point that I would like to make is that one of the reasons that is often tossed around for offering tax abatements is that they're not strictly money lost, because if we didn't give the abatement, then the development wouldn't occur. And, uh, so in that sense, this is an incentive, and, and the Comida program is an incentive for development uh, in, in order to lure important economic advantages to local communities. Uh, in this case, the, the developer has fought in court for about 10 years to have this development on this particular parcel. Um, it's not something that was contingent on this program, and I don't think that it's, I, I think there's quite a stretch to say that an incentive tax abatement program is well-suited for this application. So for those primary three reasons, um, to me, this just doesn't feel like a good business decision for the village at this time. Um, but I would, I would welcome other information to possibly change my opinion on that.
So I, I'd like to ask you, I'd, I'd like to ask you a question. So is the only time that, that supporting their Comida relief, was that only ever discussed during the terms of, of negotiation? No, I'll answer, no. It was promised at all sorts of other times. So this is a matter of us keeping our word. Uh, this, the, the red herring of, this was on a list of a settlement, and we never got into a settlement with them, is exactly that a red herring? This was talked about over and over and over again, you can check the meeting notes. Uh, you know, Justin, you were on the board that signed the letter. I think you were on the PCBA at that time, weren't you? So you signed a letter saying, yeah, this is something we, we would do. I don't, look, I don't think it's a good idea, I don't want to do it. I just think we promised to do it, and so let's do it. It's that simple.
Okay, yes, Justin?
Uh, yeah, thank you for, for those thoughts, Dan. Um, two things.
You're welcome.
In, in a letter from our attorney, not, not Jeff Turner, but the attorney representing us on the matter of 75 Monroe, um, I believe, uh, my recollection of that email is that it was never promised, it was extended as part of the settlement proposal. Um, that's, that's my knowledge at this point. Um, there is some disagreement on the planning board about whether or not we actually signed that letter.
There's, say that again, there's disagreement on the board that, so did the attorneys act on your behalf? And sign a letter on your behalf? That's outrageous.
You know, I don't think it's fully relevant right now, since we're not.
You just said it, I'm just asking you to defend.
And I'm asking if you would allow me to answer your question.
Okay, hang on, everybody's.
You just said you weren't.
Okay, he's gonna, he's gonna answer it, hang on, okay, he's gonna answer it, Dan. Yep.
Thank you, just.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's keep going.
So there was discussion at the time about whether or not the planning board was fully in support of the letter as it was extended. That's been discussed in the meeting here, I believe trustee Stetser mentioned that, it's also been mentioned, I believe, in other public meetings. At any rate, I don't believe that that is a relevant fact in front of us, because we are no longer in the context of a settlement discussion, which was the context in which we created that particular letter.
What about our, what about?
And then.
What, so, I, I, I don't understand. We've said we would do this, if, if we were starting from scratch, no way would I want to do this. Knowing what this whole thing was gonna cost us. But it, it's something that we said we'd do, and, and so I, I just don't understand. And, and it probably will happen regardless, or won't happen regardless of what we said. So I want it to be clear to everybody out here, we're not deciding on whether this is a binding thing or not. We're just deciding on whether we're gonna send a letter saying it's okay with us. That probably has almost no effect on what happens in, in, in the decision. So, in, in some ways, to me, this is a PR move, and I think it's extremely bad PR for us to say, here, we support this, and then all of a sudden, no, we don't support this, because two of the trustees are getting cold feet.
Yep, you, you made a point that, you know, we are not in control of the decision, this is simply a, a letter of, of support in terms of their application, uh, you know, another entity will be deciding it. Yes, Lily?
Um, by the same token, I think, and I'm being redundant, because I did say this at the last, um, meeting that we discussed, Comida, and that is that I indicated at that time that before moving forward, I would, and I did request more information from the village clerk, who explained that it wasn't hers, to provide that it would be unnecessary for the applicant to provide it to the board, more specific information, because as the fiscally responsible board of the village, I would like to have this information before putting my approval to, to any letter, because we, I feel I speak for the villagers, that, that is my, my charge, and I take that responsibility very seriously. And I would just like, I'm not saying I wouldn't support the letter, what I'm saying is I need more information before moving forward, so that I have done my due diligence.
Understood, okay.
How do we get you that information?
Uh, uh, the mayor would like to speak.
Okay.
I'm gonna read the letter, the draft of this letter, I think that's important for everybody to hear, it's short, okay? Um, regarding the Westport Crossing Comida application. The Board of Trustees of the Village of Pittsburgh has been asked by Mark IV Enterprises for a letter of support in regard to the application for financial assistance to Comida for the Westport Crossing project in the village. This letter will confirm that the Board of Trustees supports the granting of financial assistance to the residential portion of the project, but does not support the granting of financial assistance for any commercial portion of the project, including the proposed restaurant. Please contact us if you have any questions, you know, at the end of the letter. That's the letter. So we support certainly a portion of the project, there's another portion that we do not support, which also will generate revenue for us. Um, so there's a balance there. Um, I also just would like to remind everybody that this applicant did a, a complete brownfield cleanup, and our village, who else would incur that expense? You know, so I think that's another, another piece to weigh in how we choose to support a portion of the project going forward. We no longer have a brownfield at that site in our village. So I, I'd like the board to consider that as well.
Can I go back to my question? I'm sorry, are you done? Uh, Lily, how, how can, how can we get you the information you need in order to be able to make a decision?
I think that, speaking in the most simple terms, I would like to know, as, as a villager, this is how much tax revenue we would realize, or pretend they didn't get from Comida. How much would we save? Because we've heard over the years, how much it's gonna bring to the village in tax, tax revenue, and um, I want to balance that against how much it's gonna cost in services and increased, uh, because we know that development typically costs a, a community, it doesn't typically pay back. So I'm sure Mr. He might as well have figures to, uh, display here regarding that. So I just, I just need to see it, here it is. This is what, what if we would have, um, we would have seen uh, if we didn't get a 50% tax break over a long period, this isn't just one or two years, this is extended. So.
No, it's, goes up 10% each year.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, so who would provide that data?
Typically the developer.
Okay, so why don't we get a meeting, and we'll sit down with the spreadsheet, and we'll go over.
That, that's.
Yeah, I asked for that at the last.
Then I would propose, and, and look, it's a pro forma, you're making it up, right? It's, it's a guess.
It's a best guess.
It could be wildly wrong, but, but it will be directionally right.
Okay.
Okay? And there will be assumptions in it, a low end and a high end, whatever. Um, so then I would propose that we table this vote until after we've had that meeting.
Um, before we table anything, um, the applicant is here this evening, and I know you, you, you had your hand up to speak.
Yes, sir, I wanted to say something. No, 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 no.
But how about you and then Bob, do you want to speak af, after that? Okay.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the consideration on this, and, you know, I'm more of a glass half-full than, than a glass half empty. And so it's not a matter of how much revenue the village is gonna lose, it's a matter of how much revenue the village is gonna gain from this development. Right, right now, you're getting zero. And as you said, it's going to be a large amount someday. And so I, I appreciate your support, uh, I understand that you, you have some questions on the numbers, I can't hear the exact numbers at this time. I, until it's assessed, that won't be for years from now. I can tell you that I'm gonna make a $50 million investment into a community. And I'm gonna borrow some money to do that, and I'm gonna use a lot of my old funds to do that. This is not childish games, this is a huge investment. And using Comida to assist me, especially in the front end, is very valuable to me. And again, uh, if it's something you're willing to do, that's great, and if not, honestly, one account doesn't need your approval. My application is going in soon, we have a meeting with them soon. They're gonna, they're gonna do it one where they're, they're positive about it, they're looking forward to it, they're willing to work with us. And so, uh, if you're willing to table it and, you know, talk about numbers, that's fine. Uh, but I'll be honest with you, if it doesn't work, I'll just pull my request and go on without the support letter, so. Appreciate you considering.
Well, thanks, thanks for your input. Um, also, understand that, um, if, if we, you know, this letter is delineating what we would or would not support, which may have some bearing on how Comida views the application. Without this letter, we may lose the, the restaurant piece. So I'd, I'd like the board to just consider that, yes, Bob?
Okay, yeah, I would just like to say, having been involved in the original discussions with Chris and the approval process, um, support of a Comida letter has been part of our assumption that we can support that in the discussions with Mark IV from the beginning. I think, you know, listening to the tape of the last village board meeting that I was on at 10, I think there is a level of responsibility on this board to fully explain and have data for the issues that you discovered. So there's a level of holiness that hadn't occurred at the last meeting. I think that's the point that Justin and Lily are bringing up, and that doesn't have anything to do with.
I think we understand, I think that's been clarified, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Um, okay, so we've had some discussion, yes, and there's online, I'm sure?
Yeah, online.
Uh, hold on a moment.
Hang on a second before we go.
Hold on a moment, and Bob, um, I supported as well by saying, let's table the conversation until we have a meeting, and we get a spreadsheet open, and we do it. So just mentioning Justin and Lily isn't enough, thank you, and, and trustee Keating, that's great.
Okay, great, thanks, I'm glad we clarified all of that, before we go to online, I, yes?
Yes, Dave McGee on 28 Washington Ave. So I, I just, just a comment as a resident, you know, I would just like to see our representatives uh, who have been kind of pulled the line through their ears, kicking and screaming, to finally recognize that this project is happening, and whatever you, you know, your, your personal opinions, you, you're, you're not representing the village if you don't now fully support this project and fully support this development. Because so many meetings over the years, we enumerate all of the benefits that come with this. The hundreds of people that will be frequenting businesses. By the way, I find it interesting that we're all of a sudden, you know, ready to count our money that, that's coming in, and now we're complaining, and it might be uh, half of something, when for years we've been getting 100% of nothing. So let's keep that in mind, let's try to set aside whatever our personal grievances is, and just accept, I know some folks didn't want this, but it's happening. So let's get behind it and make sure that the developers. So let's get behind it and make sure that the developer feels super welcome to build the best possible project that we can have in the village. So thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for your input. Appreciate that. Yep?
Our peers, 70 State Street, very well spoken, Justin, regarding your marked points as to how the village and interim village residents' taxpayers would be negatively impacted if the Comita tax breaks would be provided for the 75 Monroe development. Nancy Coates, 50 Rand Place, as a village resident, I am supporting tax relief for 75 Monroe. Our peers, 70 State Street, why would the village, those residents want to support a program which benefits a developer who has cost the village residents hundreds of dollars in defense of a lawsuit initiated by the developer? And that is...
Okay, thank you for that. Thanks, everybody, for commenting.
So how do we actually table when there's been a motion? Do we have to vote on it and vote no? Or can we just withdraw the motion?
Has it been seconded?
It was seconded and came back for discussion.
I think we vote through the process.
I think we, I think you can withdraw the motion if it's okay with the rest of the board. Or table the motion. It's okay with the rest of the board. Table it.
So you would, you could amend them. You made the motion, so you could amend it?
Well...
No, it wouldn't be an amendment, actually.
I think you just by consensus table it.
We agreed to table for now, just to get the data and the spreadsheet and, you know, make sure we're...
I'm sorry, I have a clarification currently. I read something wrong. I apologize to Ms. Coates. She says I am against tax relief now for it. So I misspoke. So sorry.
Dorothy, do you see any different? I mean, we don't have, you know, written rules or procedure on this stuff. I don't see any difference.
No, I...
If you don't want to act on them, just by consensus.
Pending more information.
Yes, not completely.
We do that by motion or just agree to table? We agree to table then. And so it's a matter of record now that we have tabled the motion before us.
Where are we tabling it to?
The next meeting.
When can you get together?
Next meeting.
How soon can you get together with the...
That's the question. I can't.
Our next meeting is Monday, right?
Oh, maybe we have to get all the data.
Right, that's the problem. I don't have the data. I don't have access to that data. It's not something...
Well, that's a sit around the spreadsheet and make some assumptions kind of thing. So why don't we say that the next trustee meeting?
Okay. We have, yeah, well...
Which is two weeks from now.
It's two weeks to our next trustee meeting, but we also have meetings before that. What is a practical matter for you? We have a meeting on Monday.
I'm a little bit injecting myself too much into this.
Yeah.
Because I don't represent you. But we've been coordinating to have this meeting for the developer prior to the trustee's meeting. Okay. Because I'm not sure that was clear.
That was the intention, Monday?
So you've got to schedule a meeting.
Well, if we could schedule it...
For the next, before the next meeting.
But we have a meeting on Monday, and even if we could just take it...
That's up to the board. I know you have a missing trustee for that meeting.
Well, we don't need everybody to do the numbers.
No, it's just to pull together some information. It's not an entire board meeting. It just, the information comes back to us as a board.
I see.
You know, it's information gathering and formatting it to bring it back to...
We have a budget meeting at 4:00 PM on Monday.
I've got some time on Monday. I teach a class in spreadsheets. I'm happy to do it. I just need somebody to help me with numbers and assumptions.
And that's...
And if somebody else wants to sit in on it so we don't have a quorum, that's fine. Lilly, do you want to be a part of this? Ask questions of the data?
Do you want to work with Dan and ask questions about the data? He's going to put together the spreadsheet. Once it's presented, can I ask questions at that time? Well, anybody can ask questions at any time. That's why we have these meetings. I'm good. It will come to the... We have a budget meeting at 4:00 o'clock on Monday.
I would like somebody else there because I don't want to be accused of anything. I want either Justin or Lilly to take part in the exercise. Because I, the thought of me sitting down... Hold on. The thought of me sitting down with the developer and coming back with numbers is just setting me up for you also accusing me of terrible things. So I'd like one of you to be a part of this.
Is this virtually or in person?
We could do it either way. Virtually is probably easier because then you're all looking at the same screen.
How about virtually? Virtual, okay. And you guys can work out a time on Monday, which would be...
I'll make these happen, everyone. I hereby request to withdraw my request for a support letter for Comita. So take it off your agenda list, take it off your table, and we'll go on without you. So you proceed into your... And I'll have my attorney send the letter tomorrow. Thank you for any time thus far on this side. And I appreciate the support that's there and the support that's not there. Like Mr. Jollman said, get on board and come building this thing.
I think to be, if I may clarify my position, please. That it's not a matter of not supporting because that isn't accurate. What I am trying to convey is that I would like to represent all villagers, and there are some villagers who have concerns. I'm trying to address those concerns and get back to them with an answer so that they also feel comfortable, so that everyone feels included as part of our discussion. That's all.
I appreciate that. It's been 15 years of information. My daughter, sitting next to me, was two when we started this. She's going to college this year. It's crazy. So I hear what you're saying. Appreciate your time thinking about it. Let's spend time on getting the RFQ so I can, when I submit my plans, we can have an architect ready to review the plans so I can get a building movement. Don't worry about Comita, I'll get that anyway.
Okay, we understand that. I still think I'd like us to go through this process and just have it tabled and bring it back to the board, because we still should have an opportunity to revisit this and have an opportunity to show our support for this project. So I understand what you're saying, and I'm sorry that you felt compelled to say that. But I think this is important that this board sees us through.
Yep.
So we're tabling it. We're going to bring it back, and you're going to meet on Monday, and we're going to follow through. Okay. It's after 7:00. So we have a public hearing coming up. Dorothea?
Yep, this is the public hearing for the local law tax cap override. Village has done this every year. It doesn't necessarily mean we're going to override the tax cap, but it provides the village some safety net in case we do, so we don't have to follow through on other situations if we have to override and we're audited.
And again, this is based on NICO's recommendation.
Yes, this is a recommendation. We have done it every year since the tax cap was implemented, only before I even came on the scene. So I'm just doing what we normally do at this time of year.
Okay. Any questions from the board on that? Okay. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second, anybody?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Aye.
Trustee Liken?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, would anybody like to speak on the matter before us regarding the tax cap override? Is there anybody online?
It's not related to this, it's a separate reason.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Lampier?
Aye.
Trustee Liken?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the tax cap override? I make a motion that we, the way I have to get the year, for the year...
2023.
2023, the tax cap override.
I'll second.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Aye.
Trustee Liken?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion's passed. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving it forward.
It hurts to vote for that one.
We actually don't use, we haven't used it.
Last couple of years now, we haven't used it.
It's over.
Yeah, Andrea, I know where you're going with that. That's true. Okay, next up, it is the RFQ results for the 75 Monroe Avenue project. And again, it's really more of an update. The bid has been closed, you know, so we have had a response. And our engineer, who couldn't be with us tonight, is going over it. So this will be put back on the agenda.
Correct. Once we, once we get an opportunity to review the full proposal and...
Yeah, so we just received one.
We just received one.
Yeah. And we're excited we received one. Okay. Just in the market. Want to discuss at all extending the timeline to see if maybe we might get another?
Was it a company that we like?
You can't do that.
No, it's a bid. It's a final date. You only need one. I can tell you, we sent it out to well over 20 different organizations. It went out.
It was one, it actually was one of the larger distributions, I think, for something like this.
All the RFPs, RFQs that went out for the village, gone out to 2025 different organizations trying to get bids.
Okay.
So, you know, obviously, the board could, a recommendation could come in and the board could reject it and decide to re-bid. You can do whatever you want with it. At this point, we just got it this week. We knew this was going to be a tight timeline.
Yeah.
Our village engineer has it. He is reviewing it, and, you know, this is where we're at. So he doesn't have a finding determination. I put it on because we were hopeful we would be able to make a determination tonight. I don't have anything to say.
I have some questions. Can I ask a few questions?
Sure.
Was this sent in a bulk email to everyone?
Yes.
Was it like a BCC situation where they didn't...
Yes, everybody was blind.
So we can easily send one email to all of them saying, hey, if we wanted to extend it. It wouldn't be hard to do.
It wouldn't be hard to do, but you can't extend a closed bid.
Yeah.
If it hadn't closed, you'd have to issue addendum, like we did for the back entrance. Then we could send out the notice that there's been an addendum, the bid date has extended. You'd actually, in this case scenario, have to start all over.
Is the group that did respond one of the great people at doing this? Or is it a...
That's asking me, that's asking me a personal opinion. I have my own email offer on that.
Fair enough.
I can say we did receive respectable...
Okay. It just makes me nervous for a project this big and a role this important to only get one bid. The thought of trying to get more than one, but I also wouldn't want to alienate the one that did respond. So it's a tricky thing.
One of the problems might have been, and this is just my opinion, we gave it a very short timeline. We really did try to push to get this quick, to get it resolved, and their hope was we would get responses. But we have seen this with all our RFPs, all our bids, all our RFQs. Either we've gotten no bids or we've gotten one more.
It's also a reflection of the market. I mean, that has, that's...
So, you know, going back out and offering a longer timeframe, could we possibly get more bids? Maybe. I just can't give you a good guess on any of this. We got a bid, so...
But we put out our road bids out, what we're on the second or third round here.
Yes.
You know, I mean, this is a reflection also of the market.
Yeah, getting a bid to me right now...
You can't get people to respond.
Is exciting. I'm thrilled we got a bid.
Yeah.
I feel like the system worked because we actually got something, you know? That's what I can...
But we'll have, you know, we'll have our engineer review it, and then he will report back to us, and it'll be on the agenda, so...
Yeah.
Just for clarification, which agenda?
The next meeting.
The Monday or the 28th meeting?
Soon as I can have...
I wonder if, I don't know if we can get to it by Monday. We could try to, we'll try to make sure he can do that, okay? Otherwise, I know where you're going with this. It's the timeframe for everything. Yeah.
We are trying to push this along.
Yeah, yeah, we'll reach out to him.
Thank you.
Yeah, we will.
We will shoot for 2:13, and as soon as I have information to onboard, I will get it to you.
Yeah, he just hasn't returned, chance to review it. Okay. Oh, grant opportunities. You have the one from the Preservation League. I think you all got that in your packet. I mean, so many grants coming up, so I know there's a lot of, lot of sort of moving parts here. And Dorothea has the...
This is...
Assessment.
Yes, this is an assessment on the Village Hall that was done in 2001.
So what we would be looking at, this is the Preservation League of New York. This is an excellent grant. It is geared to municipalities that, you know, we have an historic building. This, I don't know if the grant was used for this in the past, but it mirrors what we're looking at. We need to update this. This was done about 22 years ago. So it's an opportunity for us to get funding, just to update this, see where we are, you know, 22 years later. And then with the updated book, it will help us to get other grants. So, you know, I think it's really kind of a win-win process here. And this was also done by Bureau, you know, so... Good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
So I think we just might see getting this done again.
Yeah, 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 so that's really what we're looking at. And it's due, I believe, at the end of March. No idea though how much, how much, are we asking for a specific amount? Are we saying this is about how much it will cost?
I think we would seek estimates to see how much...
Yeah, we're going to get estimates.
To get this done.
Yeah, okay.
So we can get it done again.
Okay. And the grant ranges that they award typically between $5,000 to $14,000. And it's not, you know, it's on the lower end of that, because it's really an update of something that already exists. So they're not going to be doing the entire thing. This particular grant, well, it's in your packet. I don't know if I had a chance. It is 20%, yeah. So, you know, if it's $4,000, do it or $5,000. You know, that kind of thing. But it's a great opportunity for us.
Given updates or things we want to do at the Hall, we should have an updated one.
So, you know, I'd like, I think we should pursue this, you know. Sounds good for us. I mean, I think it's just really a good opportunity for us. Okay, and we need a motion on that?
Does it require a board action to...
It probably will.
Why don't we do it?
Probably, we can do that when, if the board's in agreement, we'll get the grant going Probably, we can do that when, if the board's in agreement, we'll get the grant going and bring.
We just do a motion to authorize you go ahead.
To go ahead to get the information?
Yeah.
Okay. Am I saying anybody?
I make a motion.
Okay. Lilly's jumping in on the motion.
I, I made the motion.
To authorize, you know, Dorothea to pursue the.
The grant.
The Preservation League grant to update our building report.
Second.
Okay, second from Dan. Roll call, please.
Trustee Liken?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, and then you all received, we were able to take the grant application out of the portal, so you all received the grant application from the Canal, Canal Corp. for enhanced amenities or whatever it is, expanded amenities, I think that was. And I know, Justin, you were interested perhaps in helping, so we, if you can help us out, that'd be great. Because I'm working on it with Megan, too. So, you know, I need, all hands on deck, because, you know, we have deadlines, if you, if you're able to help.
This is, can, can you clarify what this is for?
This was, this was the discussion that we had about the fact that we have so many events and it's so active during the season on the canal and it, we, the amenities that we have right now are the portable port-a-cotties. So we would be looking for funding to kind of beef up that service of it, you know, as we were saying, have more port-a-cotties, more frequent cleanings, you know? That's kind of an ongoing concern. So it's, it's an opportunity for us to get funding for it. Because we spent, how much we spent, what are we spending on? It, it adds up.
Oh, yeah.
That's what we're talking for.
About $800.
Yeah, you know, and to expand it, we can be going to $1,000, you know, depending on how, how we want.
It's a weight off some things.
Yeah, weight offset. So it's just kind of a, you know, it's kind of a no-brainer, really, I think. You know?
Right, spending the money.
Yeah, yeah, we're spending the way, but if they, they give us half of it.
They're so much better.
Yeah, I'm taking this pretty good. So that's really what it's about. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'd be happy to review any information that's sent to me.
Yeah, you know, I'll have Megan get in touch with you about it because I know she's, she's been working on it, too. So that's the update on that. And then item number six, the consideration of the RFP for the DPW bathroom engineering. Okay, and we have that. Everybody?
You can see that in the packet.
No, there's nothing in the packet. We're seeking.
I think it's in the packet.
Approval to.
To, to authorize it.
To authorize Scott to get that engineering together so we can go ahead and get that project moving.
Yeah.
We can't build it if we don't have plans.
Yeah, and we have the ARCA funding set aside and the Sura funding, so we're good to go.
Kind of goes together.
So we're, we're seeking to authorize Scott to do the RFP.
For the engineer.
To write the RFP.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to do that.
Can I speak a little bit?
Yeah.
Because the approval was also for the generator, should we lump that in on the same RFP?
Yeah, it's a good idea.